To order, members in attendance are Candy Yocum, Mark McKieber and myself, Chair Bruce Trucco, who is still absent. The purpose of this meeting is for the limited purpose of discussing council rules and procedures that we've been working on. And you all received by email as well as in your packet from Todd today the suggested clerical errors that Mrs. Bashan had emailed to us. Candy, you had a chance to read through them?
I did.
Did you see anything that was problematic to you?
No, I did not. I think those changes were actually related.
I thought the same. I spoke with the council president who agrees. I spoke with Mr. Hill who agrees. So do we need to read through everything, Rob? What changes were?
Do you have anything? Do you want to add something?
I would just say all it was is clarifying where it says he or she. He, that is he, she.
Yeah, I can run through, I guess, to make a quick summary. It's off the record. But, you know, in the introduction of the cover pages, she suggested that we add information about the ordinance and resolutions outlined in Chapter 113, entitled Ordinance and Resolutions, and Entitled III, Entitled Legislative, and Part I, Entitled Administrator Code. Basically, it's just pointing back to where we need to refer to. Then many more of these, she adds a she after he. We talked about the one, it was Rule Number Seven, that I had made the comment that we could remove it because it was going to be addressed later, but part of that was where council president had suggested we have people fill out a split. That's where I was addressing it later. Since we struck that out, now we kind of have to go back and adjust that in, and she did catch that. So, Rule Number Seven, her suggested revision is each individual addressing council is asked to identify himself or herself in his or her residential address for purpose of the public record and to project his or her voice so the entire council can hear the speaker. Person speaking, council will face council and not speak to the audience. So that puts that back in, which was a good catch. Rule Number Eight was just an addition to speaking on one subject at a time. Rule Number Ten was all he and she, adding the she's after he and her after him. A B was a simple typo fix, adding the word chapter and the... What we suggested was as well as publishing them on the Besire's website as well as being posted at the post office and courthouse. And then Rule Number Ten under miscellaneous, again, more typographical, just correcting, capitalizing some things. And she added a phrase, I'll read the whole paragraph. "Rules and procedure for Besire's City Council operating under a statutory form of government shall continue from term to term unless modified, amended or altered," and here's what she added, "on the report of a proper committee to which the subject has been previously referred or adopted by vote of majority of all members." So it just means that if we want to carry on from term to term, it still needs to be referred back to ad hoc to make such changes. So I applaud her for, you know, cleaning some of that up, read through them as a whole. So if I, I guess I'll go back to Candy, Mark, ask you both if you had any other questions.
We don't.
I would entertain a motion to send these on the full council for approval to adopt these as our rules and procedure.
Motion?
If Candy's second, my Mark, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. That motion carries, so we will put that in general decision for full council to vote on. And with that, I will adjourn the ad hoc committee at 6:49, and the council meeting starts at seven o'clock.
I'm going to call the March 3rd council meeting. The order is seven o'clock. Please stand and our invocation prayer is going to be led by Pastor Compton, and then remain standing for the pledge of allegiance after that.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you again for the opportunities that you bring our way. Thank you for this time that individuals could meet together to discuss issues that are important to all of us. We just pray that you will give them clarity of thought and wisdom, and we pray that we will always understand the tremendous freedoms we have, and may we do all we can to protect them, especially the freedom of religion and freedom of speech. Thank you again for all you've done for us, and thank you for allowing us to live in a country where we have these kind of freedoms. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
For the liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. McKieber?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Me?
Here.
Trucco?
Here.
Yocum?
Here.
Both?
Here.
All set. For you are the minutes from the February 4th, 20... That's the date. It is February 4th with the...
Eighteen.
February 18th, 2020 meeting. Regular council meeting, your motion to accept the minutes.
So moved second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have communications and conditions here. We did receive a letter. We're not going to read the whole thing.
Yes, we received a letter from Vicki DeShawn of Hillcrest Drive, a fellow of the Hillcrest Drive. These are concerning, was addressed to Besire's City Council dated March 20 regarding the cover page and the draft rules and procedure for Besire's City Council. We had a special ad hoc committee, ad hoc committee meeting on the rules and procedure at 6:45 PM this evening, in which we address all of her changes here, and we adopted all of her changes, the committee did. This will go before the full council here in a few minutes, actually right after committee's talking, to be gone by the full council, and then there's a resolution required for this, and then we'll go from there.
Okay, the rules that were just approved by the committee parent this meeting here this evening, we need a vote on that.
No, just a motion, we don't have to do a motion, we just need that.
All those in favor of adopting those rules, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We have rules now. So granting permission for Besire's to speak, we have the bicentennial commission here, which I think we don't have the presentation by Ms. Patterson and Mr. Fisher.
It knows.
It knows.
Thank you for having us. I'm Kelly Patterson, I'm the Besire's bicentennial coordinator, and we just have a little bit of information we wanted to share with you this evening. In 1819, Samuel M. Norton settled in Besire's in an abandoned teepee up where the courthouse sits, and in 1821, Besire's was established with a Kuna Kill womb. Over the next 199 years, Besire's has grown into a community known for our hospitality, our hometown roots, our religious heritage, our good food, including bratwurst, our murals, and most importantly, for our kindness for one another, and because we're always willing to help each other like we're a big family. In 2018, we worked with the local high school students and our teachers from Besire's High School, Kuna Crawford High School, Winford High School, to create a mural on the RVT building back there on Walnut Street. And then the civic groups also helped fund to get the painting supplies to complete that mural. Besire's truly is a generous community, and on there, there's a plaque, and I'm going to read a little clip from it. It says, "The Community Unity mural is about bringing people together. The basis for this project is about reminding the viewer that no matter where they are from or what school district they live in, they are part of something bigger. Besire's is so much bigger than just our city limits." And anyway, this is also where our bicentennial logo was developed from. We've worked very hard for quite a while now developing our bicentennial commission, and we've put all of our funding in place. We have it all through Projects, Inc., which is a support organization through the Crawford County Community Foundation, and we also have a website done through Avon Printing. That website is www.bisars2021.com, and we do have some of our bicentennial commission members here with us. On our commission, we have Denny and Sue Norton. Denny is a direct descendant of Samuel Norton. We have Mary Ellen Lust, and then we also have Linda Blicky and Fred Fisher. We have Debbie Gifford, we have Elaine Naples, we have Randy Fisher, and we have Rhonda Rowland. Rhonda Rowland is our event coordinator, and she's going to explain a few of our exciting events that we have planned for our bicentennial celebration.
Well, thanks, Kelly. Happy birthday, Besire's, right? Okay, 2021. I'm just over the moon excited to be here, to share with you some of the events that we have planned that we're going to be hosting in 2021. And I'd like to first start with the Black Tie Gala, okay? That's going to be fantastic. It's going to be New Year's Eve 2020 at Pickwick, and you're all invited, okay? So let's talk about it. How does a wonderful evening full of fun, fellowship, great food that is served to you, wonderful music playing, nice dancing, right? Tuxedos, Lisa, Candy, Joyce, you can start shopping for your gowns now, okay? All right, it's going to be lots of fun. But wait, it doesn't stop there, and you know why? Because there are some people that maybe not want to get all dressed up for gala, correct? So there's going to be an event. Dillinger's have agreed to stay open late and have something a little bit more informal at Dillinger's for those who want to be downtown, because you want to be downtown, and you know why? Because we are going to have our very own Besire-style bratwurst sandwich drop, okay? Watch out, New York City, here we come, okay? And not only is it going to be a bratwurst sandwich drop at the stroke of midnight, we're also going to have some activities downtown, hopefully some live music, and just a lot of fun. So if you're thinking, "I'm at a pickwick, and I'm in a gown and a tuxedo, I'm going to trek downtown Besire's," well, guess what? We figured that out too. So we're going to have live stream, live stream from downtown Besire's, okay? We're moving up here, okay? With a little bit of help with technology, you're going to move, take a live stream downtown of bratwurst sandwich drop and bring it to the Pickwick, to those attending the Pickwick Gala, so we all can be a part of the big event, just like we kind of all watched the drop in New York City, right? It was going to happen right here in Besire's, okay? If you have any questions, please ask. Again, please mark your calendars. Our kickoff for the 2021 bicentennial is New Year's Eve 2020, Besire-style, okay? I'm pretty excited about that one. So I would like to also highlight a few additional events that we'll be hosting through 2021. The big Besire's bicentennial, Fourth of July weekend, and this is going to be huge. This will be huge for Besire's as well, because July 2nd, Friday, will be a First Friday, so that'll be a good kickoff for First Friday, and have it all bicentennial related. Then on July 3rd, the fireworks, Doug? Yep, you're my friend. We're going to talk about fireworks, and a big display of fireworks with regard to the bicentennial. And then on July 4th, the day, July 4th, in the afternoon, we're going to have, we're going to bring back the cemetery walk at Oakwood, all right, so that we can celebrate our heritage there. And then to top off the big weekend to celebrate the bicentennial, we're going to have a parade, a founder's parade, okay? Downtown Besire's with lots of floats, and guess what else will be there? A birthday cake, right? An even birthday cake for the founders, right? So it'll be a big birthday cake, so big family parade with lots of units, okay? Sound good, though?
God.
We're talking about pets, right? We'll be friends now, we better get. Okay, so in addition to that, on our agenda, we have a progressive tour and dinner showcasing great stops in Besire's as well as great food, and this is awesome, very special transportation. You know what that means? You ever been to downtown Gatlinburg or someplace that has the trolley cars? San Francisco? Not quite down that way. Okay, so there are going to be buses that resemble a trolley car that we'll use for these tours, so. They're classy, huh? Okay. Excuse me. A youth day, which we're going to celebrate our youth. Obviously, we all know our youth is our future, right? So we need to celebrate the youth. That will hopefully be, and also not to celebrate them, but encourage them to understand, excuse me, the history of Besire's. So important, because I can bet you that there's a lot out there that don't understand the history of Besire's. Okay. We're going to have a musical heritage experience. We're calling it an experience because we're going to ask if we can maybe connect it with a First Friday so that we can have some of our local performers performing on our Art Park stage, thank you very much, and we'll use that stage to, you know, highlight some of our local musicians. And then, very important, the most important actually, is our religious heritage, okay? So we want to celebrate our religious heritage, and doing that, we're going to be contacting all churches in our area, and we're going to go outside, you know, Washington, whatever. We're going to ask them to set aside this day as a religious heritage celebration, and what we're asking them to do is do it their own way, we'll give them little tips, but we're asking them, also encouraging them to have a host of lunch, you know, for their individual members and guests and such for that day, again, to highlight our heritage, our religious heritage, so important to our community, right? Historical building tours, highlighting obviously Besire's top of pedal, the train station, for instance, some homes, an airport flying, where we will be paying tribute to our nation's first female airport manager, so pretty cool for this area, right? So in addition to all those, if you're not having enough excitement, okay, we're going to partner with those events that have already been established in Besire's. We have some awesome events, don't we, that are in Besire's? So we don't want to mess with their parties, but we want to partner with them just to bring in the bicentennial theme for 2021. The Rowers Festival, your very own Kevin Myers has been nothing but fantastic, sharing suggestions and thoughts and just really supporting what we're trying to do, so we really appreciate that, Kevin. He's also agreed to allow the bicentennial to be the theme of 2021, so just right along, you know, and I just think that's going to be fabulous, and he's got a few tricks up his sleeve that he's made some suggestions that will bring the bicentennial to life. The Car Show, an opportunity for the presentation of history of Besire's automobile manufacturing, right? We can collaborate with them. First Fridays are already talked about, July 2nd being the date we could kick off the bicentennial weekend. Spectacular, you know, fun for all ages. Who's been to Spectacular? I hope you all have, yeah? Okay. We're right here in our own Old River Park, right? There's kind of a heritage and history at Old River Park, right? Let's bring that to life. Candlelight Christmas, an opportunity for us to end this bicentennial by wrapping up, no pun intended, the year. You got that, all right, Mary, so thank you. Okay. And then the Royal, the Royal Rotary Panake Day, you know, there's, again, is a nice platform for us to do some presentations, some speeches, whatever, with regard to the bicentennial. The Crawford County Athletic Hall of Fame, paying tribute to Besire's outstanding athletes and teams. Let's promote our sports history, you know, let's talk about the history, not just current time, so again, bring in the bicentennial. The Memorial Day Parade, and this one gets me excited too, because, you know, over the years, it's kind of, you know, gotten a little smaller and smaller and smaller. So we're going to be talking to the superintendents of each of the schools and asking them, and nothing against Besire's, but actually, Mr. Fiss was the one that suggested this, so I'm going to give him kudos for this. Let's get Winford and Buckeye and Crawford bands here that day. Let's make this a huge parade, again, paying tribute to our bicentennial, and then when we get to cemetery, let's also add in some extra, you know, fluff with regard to letting everyone know, and let's get a bigger crowd at Oakwood Cemetery this past year, okay? The Veterans Remembrance Day, the Veterans Hall of Fame, we're also going to tie in and celebrate our veterans, so we'll be looking for sponsors. Our vision is to actually have a free meal for every veteran in our area here, so I think that's, you know, that would be very, very nice, so if you have any suggestions, we're open to that. I just sincerely hope that you're as excited about this and you can jump on board and be excited as the commission is about this bicentennial. It's going to take all of us, it really is. We're going to need a lot of volunteers, so we're asking you to please share it with your friends and neighbors, and you can contact me day or night, 24/7, and I'm sure my partners would say the same. And I know that, and anybody that knows me, knows that I live in a world of rainbows and ponies, okay? I do, and that's okay. But I would invite you to consider coming into that world for 2021, okay? We have an opportunity here. We can come together as a community, and we can really celebrate all year long. So let's celebrate togetherness, kindness, this beautiful town we have and the love we have for one another. Thank you.
All right, we also have Randy Fisher. He's going to explain a few of our legacy projects that we have planned, because as many rainbows and ponies that we love to have, ultimately, what we want to do is that we want to, you know, we're stimulating the pride in our community, but we also want to build towards the next 100 years. So our legacy projects, Randy's going to explain those.
Thank you, Kelly. That's a tough act to follow, to be really, really happy, how you know me, it's kind of hard for me to do sometimes. I will say that we want to see each one of you guys fitted a tux for the thing, that is mandatory, that we have to have. We have to get about 125 guys that are going to want to wear tuxes on New Year's Eve this year, so. I'm going to talk about legacy projects, and while we want to and we will, we are going to go celebrate our bicentennial, we've gotten, the commission has gotten clear direction from the mayor that, while that's all well and good, we, our focus is to plan and fund what we're calling legacy projects. These are tangible improvements to the city that will be a benefit to the community for years and for generations to come. We want to leave a legacy. We just still want to have a bunch of parties and have fun, say you have pictures and a bunch of stuff on Facebook, we want to actually do something that will improve our community. So I'm going to talk a little bit about our flagship project, which we're calling the North Park. The plan is to create a park on the site of the old ice plant on Norsen Dusky. The big idea is to have a tiny advantage of the lake traffic that travels through our town most of the year. We want to build a, have a dog park and a small children's play area, amongst other things, but those two things, we think, if you're traveling from Columbus or anywhere in Central Ohio, we're halfway, right? And that would be a phenomenal place for those folks to get out, let the dogs run, let the kids run, and creating an area there for food trucks to be parked, for them to get some food and possibly even explore Besire's more. So we really want, and I think it was a travel tourism that has, take a break on your way to the lake, that's what we want to build upon on that park. It also serves as a trailhead for walking, invite cats that will take off both east and west along the river, and we will also be connecting to Hardwood Fields, just a lot of positives about placing a green space there and connecting it back along east and east and west along the river. A lot of you probably don't know, but there is a monument that's being generous, but it's more like a brick wall that's on the southwest side of the river there at Norsen Dusky, and it has two plaques on it, and one of them is to the Norton family, and the other one is to the Casey family, who actually I think paid for the brick wall, so. But we want to bring that Norton plaque in particular across the street to the east side and put it and have it be part of the park and have that, I'm not going to talk about that yet, but we want to have that, some type of recognition and honoring of the Norton family at that park. We are, we have an agreement with the owner of the ice plant to purchase it, we're in negotiations with the other property owners, so hopefully we will have that, all that land and be able to build a very nice park. We are very, very excited about that project, that is our flagship, our flagship project. I'm going to mention briefly just a few other projects that we're thinking about. At the entrances to the town, we want to create new welcome to Besire's signs for those folks traveling into Besire's and to put our signage at those entrances. There's always improvements to Old River Park that we could do, Shines Art Park that we have in mind. Rhonda mentioned the cemetery walks, and there is a six, seven foot tall obelisk there at Oakwood Cemetery. It's made out of sandstone, so it's weathered a lot, it was put there in 1884, and it's a marker that, it's called a true meridian, and it marks the intersection of longitude and latitude on the map and at that point, and so we would like to replace that with a more primitive marker and put a time capsule in there, possibly do that during that weekend or after, during the cemetery walk. So we've got a number of ideas, we're always welcome, new ideas. We want ideas on how to improve the community, and again, that's going to be a focus of our funding that comes in. And so with that, you're probably sitting there thinking, "Well, how the heck are they going to be able to afford all that stuff?" We've been fundraising since last fall. To date, we have raised $96,000. It's just a fraction of what we want to raise. We are, we continue to fundraise, and we've met with the community foundations, they're both very excited about helping us with this project, on these projects, and we're also pursuing a number of other grant opportunities. So with that, I want to introduce Brad Murdough of First Federal Bank. They are our latest contributor, and he's going to talk about their contribution, right?
I think you want the check. You want the check.
Well, thank you for the opportunity. I will have even less energy to speak than Randy and certainly Mr. Murdough. I actually just wanted to see Kurt tie. But no, I appreciate the opportunity to come here. We've been around, First Federal has been around for the vast majority of those 200 years. We were founded in 1888, and I've been in my position for three years, but this, the credo that we follow has, I think, has been part of us for a long, long before I got here. We live by a couple of models, if you will. One is to make good things happen for others, and the other is community is our mental name. They sound a lot like marketing strategies, and they are to some degree, but our 75 employees blend in every day, and I'm proud to stand up here and represent them, proud that our board allowed us to do this. We feel it's very important to give back to a community that has given so much to us over such a long period of time, and the contribution itself is, will match, I won't say this properly, will match 10% up to $50,000, and there's the big check. So I, it's my, it's been my pleasure and a source of pride for me to be a leader of an organization that is still committed to this city and all the other markets that we operate in. And the contribution itself is, will, will match, I wouldn't say this properly, will match 10% up to $50,000. And there's, there's the big check. So I, it's, it's my, it's been my pleasure and a source of pride for me to be, be a leader of, of an organization that is still committed to this city and all the other markets that we, that we operate in. What I would challenge those, those other businesses in, in Uziris is to, is to kind of do like we did. We put our money where our mouth is. And I hope they do the same. I hope that, I hope that we maximize that and, and beyond. So it's a, it's an exciting time, an exciting project, and we're very proud to be, to be a part of it.
We absolutely will raise a half a million dollars so we can, we can capture all that, all that money. So with that, before we take questions, I want to turn it back over to Kelly to, to wrap it up.
Okay. So I just wanted to reiterate that we're in search of volunteers and that we're always accepting new ideas. One of the things with the website is that we're looking for pictures. Charles's husband had a fantastic idea from the sesquicentennial, Mr. Razor. So any, any photos, we have it on the website so that you can download pictures and they'll be on the website. That's, that's really neat to us. Again, we, our website is uziris2021.com. If you have any questions or if you wanna contact us, you can contact us on the website or you can contact me on, at the mayor's office. My number's 419-562-6767, extension 221. And I think that's everything, but thank you very much for having us.
Kelly, how do individuals donate to the bicentennial fund?
They can get ahold of us through the website. There is a donation form there. Or they can get ahold of Projecting through the Community Foundation and they can make the donation through them.
It's all tax deductible?
Yes.
Any of the other council members have any questions for the?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Next up, we have the annual report of the police department. My pleasure. Thank you, Mr. President, council members, and everyone does not have to leave on my account. That usually happens when we do the annual report of the police department. If anyone has any active warrants, you can see Officer Kramer. 2020 is going to be an exciting year, there's no doubt about that. And I'll jump right in and say that 2019, we had 24 Neighborhood Watch Parties, which was more than we've had in many years. We have a long tradition with National Night Out. I shouldn't say National Night Out Parties, but one is Neighborhood Watch and National Night Out are one and the same. And I see some National Night Out Party hosts in the room or future hosts. I make eye contact. The goal for 2020 is to have 30 in 20. So if we could have 30 parties in 20, that would be great. And we heard so much about the bicentennial and what a great year it's gonna be. And I think you take a statistical report and if you see more of that, National Night Out Parties, that should be your measure of success right there if you have neighborhoods that wanna get together and spend more than 10 minutes, but 10 hours. If you could take prep time and party time, it's really an all-in-one, isn't it, Ken?
Yeah, it is.
For sure. And on behalf of the men and women of the police department, I want to say thank you to the public and everyone at Uziris for your support. Without public support, we couldn't be successful tonight. I'm proud to say I believe we are successful. We've lowered crime over the last several years by any, you could, you could tweak it here and there, but it's about 50% reduced. We're at 10,007 calls per year. Typically, we had about 13,000 and a half or 14,000 calls per year if you went back to 2010 or 2012. And I think that's very impressive and it's a sign that we're being, we're being successful and making an impact where it has to be made with the most serious crimes. The Crawford County situation as a whole is a reflection of that as well. Crawford County crime is down about the same across the board and we work very well together with the other agencies. And our agency is a big part of the special response team. It's a service that Crawford County never had before. We used to have to call the State Patrol or neighboring counties if we had very dangerous circumstance. We had more than a dozen of those last year. Not all of Uziris, but they happened throughout the county, so we share resources and wherever the event happens, we deploy. And I wanna, I know the mayor's gonna say something about this, but one of our members of the special response team was injured last year, Jamie Carver, and the mayor's gonna speak more about that and he's here tonight, but I, the, no matter how well we're doing, the job remains dangerous and we still have things that we have a lot of worry about. And one of those is methamphetamine. We've done a tremendous job being a change agent, an example to other communities on how to deal with the opioid epidemic. And in the back of the report, I know you all read it and there'll be a test on it later, but there's pie charts and everything, but opiate and heroin use is pretty stable actually, even though, and statistics are very deceiving. We didn't even count in the city all our overdoses accurately until a couple of years ago. And the issue actually started more than 16 years ago. And we were one of the first communities that took action, together we hurt, together we heal, and the community care march because people were dying in our community at a rate that was the highest in the state of Ohio. That's not happening now, but we still have an addiction issue just like the rest of the nation. And I know you'll address a resolution later to make sure that settlement monies get back to where, where they should. Where they should end up is here. And by any calculation of loss of life and wrongful death, I calculated out, I thought about $77 million should come to Crawford County in wrongful death settlement. That would probably be a half a million dollar settlement per life that we lost in Crawford County. I seriously doubt it would be anything close to that. I have no idea, but we sure have to get this resolution in to make sure we have some compensation for it. There is no compensation for the loss of life in the worst. On a lighter note, car problem is down thanks to partnering with the community. Community-oriented policing is the backbone of what we do. We're a small department. Our staffing, although we're so grateful to have staffing return to something in the twenties because we have plenty of officers, including myself, we're authorized 22. Without our partnership with the school for a school resource officer, we'd have 19. When our crime statistics were the worst, we only had 16 officers working, sometimes 17, sometimes fewer with injuries. And the calls were, well, off the charts, much related to felony crimes and road trafficking. So we turned the corner on that and we partner with the community on programs that are innovative. I had the honor to speak with the International Association of Chiefs of Police about responding to the opioid crisis in rural communities because we've done some things that were innovative and one is Operation Hope. Because we've made so many arrests, we've served so many search warrants, it's always in the back of our mind. If people have the option to seek treatment before the inevitable happens, the inevitable being death, non-fatal overdoses, or the police officer with handcuffs and police guard, some people will choose to try treatment. It's a low percentage, if you took 100 people in addiction, maybe 10 or 20 might ask for help, but it makes a huge difference and no word spreads. Just today, I took a phone call with a mom asking about her adult son. My son's tearing the house up, lots of, he's literally tearing the house up, vandalism, holes in the wall, broken windows. He's on methamphetamine. What can I do? Well, the Operation Hope isn't necessarily for that, but is your son, are you safe? That's the first question. Day to day, when she's talking to me, she says, is your son safe right now? Well, I try to stay away from him as much as possible. I think he's safe right now. Well, if he's got some ability to think, can you talk to him about an option about asking for help? Because if he did want help and called the helpline, they actually could get an appointment for detox thanks to our volunteers who can find a way to detox for somebody and then a treatment. Undenied to a lot of people, there's a treatment for women in Winfield, just across the county line at Colcher's Bath. That's just one of hundreds across the state of Ohio. And there's open meds for the, in those places. And it's the work of volunteers. Santana Stamper's here tonight, you're gonna talk about her work. But that's a great alternative to jail. Jail has saved lots of lives, there's no doubt about that, and people in addiction tell me that all the time, "Thank you, otherwise I might be dead." But there's much more to that. And our jail, and, and back to what's happening in Crawford County, our jail is consistently 100% full, open capacity, and people have to heal in the meantime because we're doing a great job. Addiction's a problem, keeping the jail full, but we're making sure people that need to be in jail are the most serious criminals. We don't want the jail full of otherwise non-criminals who just have addiction. So I hope that makes sense and we're gonna continue working on that. The road to recovery often starts with intervention in the back of the police car, that's what I'm about to say. That is true. So we have to stay vigilant on the methamphetamine issue, which you see in all the pie charts. Methamphetamine in the last three years has gone from, it wasn't here, to it is the number one by triple the rate of abused narcotics right now. And that, I'm gonna stick to the report instead of talking about drug and addiction and everything tonight. But a crucial part of being successful is partnering in the community and the volunteers in Operation Hope are amazing. And we talk about parades and we couldn't have parades in town if we didn't have an auxiliary unit that was making them. They show up and the police explorers show up because as Kevin will tell you, running the Bratwurst Festival, how many people does it take to cover the entire parade route, let's say? 50?
40 and 50.
So there's only, yeah, there's only 20 of us if we all, if we're all there on overtime because yes, we are human and we have to sleep. So during the Bratwurst Festival, it's unique because almost the entire police department is at every parade. That's a huge undertaking. So we're gonna try to do, how many parades this year? We're at 30 National Night Out Parties? Sounds like at least a parade a week. So we're gonna do it. So our area is less attractive to criminal activity, there's no doubt, but we, we can't let our guard down. Neighborhood watch groups have to remain vigilant. It started with a problem of thefts. You couldn't leave wallets and purses in, in your car. If you wanted to find, if you wanted to disappear, leave it in your car, it was gonna be gone. We had only, I think it was 34 off the top of my head, car break-ins last year. It used to be well over 100 every year. I want to also give you a little insight into how we work. We tried a bait car last year. That was two years ago, but for this room, just to give you an idea. We had a bait car with a purse and a little tracking device in it and we tried and we tried and no one would touch the bait. Then we moved the bait car to the highest street of activity in Uziris and kid you not, for two weeks, nobody touched it. In fact, we moved it from the seat to the dash. Nobody touched it, so. But we still had 34 car breaks and if you wanna lose it, don't lock it up. You have to lock it up or take it in your house or it will disappear typically in any town. Protect your property. Moving on to the highlights of the year, the car show. The Fraternal Order of Police has done a great job in making sure that continues. That's a great tradition. And we also had the law enforcement torch run, which the Fraternal Order of Police supports and participates in every year. And it's been the last several years where the torch is run through Uziris and we're looking forward to doing that again this year. The school resource officer program is crucial to our community. We have 13% of kids living in kinship care. Said that before, council, I asked you to consider that. Now, that's the end of a 15-year cycle of addiction epidemic and we have to do everything that we can think of to work with the community and help our youth. And the school resource officer program is critical. Officer Jo Stahl is primarily at the secondary school and Officer Jim Motta is at the elementary school, although Jo teaches Dare K through 12. Drug prevention is critical and she teaches Dare at the elementary school. Those two also volunteer as youth soccer coaches on their own time. And the soccer program at Harmon Park is still doing wonderful and there's a lot of kids involved in that and the police department has always supported that very well. The school resource officers provide training on a wide array of topics to the kids and also the teachers on school security. The highlighted year is Safety Town. We had 80 kids last year in Safety Town and we're looking forward to another great year with that. That's pre-K to kindergarten education for kids going to school on all basics and with the fire department, we work on fire safety, safety out of the street, bicycles and everything you can think of. And it's a great time. The Operation Hope and School Resource Officer Program overlaps with Operation Hope for Christmas led by Officer Stahl and Santana Stamper. They served over 40 children in need in 2019. And one of the saddest things, the mayor can attest to this, when you talk to kids and kids will come up to you and say, Mom or Dad's in jail. And they say, can you help get my mom out of jail? Get my dad out of jail? And it's heartbreaking, but interacting with the kids is what the school resource officers do best and they reassure them there's hope. The civilian volunteers do an amazing job. Without them, we couldn't, as I said, run events in the city with all the parades. And the explorer program is also very educational. Those young youngsters are the future of police and fire. I want to thank the fire department for helping train them also. They're working on EMT, paramedic stuff, first aid, and they're all great candidates to be future firefighters and police officers in Uziris. And the thing that made me happiest last year was when one of our explorers during the senior day football game, I hadn't heard this, and I don't know how many football games I've been to, but they introduced him and they say, "Goals to join the military, wants to be a police officer for the city of Uziris." That was the first high school senior I like a grade. That's right. I'm like a grade said that and I wrote, and Kenny won the Jim Walker Award on top of it last year, so. We should, we will be lucky to have him. And it's challenging for police departments our size to recruit. I imagine it's with the fire department as well because in today's world, hiring and recruitment, the recruit oftentimes has to pay to run away through school. Big cities might have their own academies and we don't get, we don't get to pick our superstars and say we've got a spot for you, unfortunately. So we're trying to also think about ways to innovate with community colleges to have a win-win pipeline of recruits to small municipalities. So who knows, maybe that'll work out. The explorer program, you know, every way possible, Safety Town, the car show, Memorial Day Parade, Fourth of July, Bratwurst Festival. They clean up after the festival, color run, torch run, backpack program, spooktacular. They run the traffic control at the Air Force, Air, Air National Guard, no, it was not a right pad, actually, the airbase. Santa Parade, awards ham giveaway, that's to name a few. So they also compete in, with other explorer groups across the state in simulated exercises and they did fantastic last year. We added an officer last year and I saw her leave the room, her name, we had plushes of Ellie there, plushes of Harvey. Some of you have already added those to your collection, so we had a grant from the Jimmy Rice Foundation for Lost and Missing Children and we added Bloodhound Ellie as a puppy. She's gone from about 70. She's gone from about seven weeks and seven pounds old to seven, I don't know how many weeks she's been, but seventy-seven pounds is probably where she's at now. So she'll be going to school with Officer Angus Wolf in April to be certified. And after that, then they test it later in the year. And she'll be attracting bloodhounds. Search and rescue's the main, the main mission. But she'll also track burglars and things of that sort, a human tracker. So Officer, Captain Neil Ostenheimer still has Harvey. Harvey's, I think, about seven years old. So we're also looking to the future of what our next K nine will be. One of the goals for the year, the police garage out back, we have to upgrade that. That has to be upgraded to meet minimum standards. You may not know it, in City Hall, we have a property room in the basement of City Hall, which, the first property room in 1970, was down in Aragon, was still in jail. Another property room upstairs, so mostly it's archives downstairs. But some of the case work has to be kept for life, and we're running out of room. So we have to ensure we have a secure, stable climate in the police garage. So we have to work on that. Across the board, the officers all have special duties. Lieutenant Dorsey's running Neighborhood Watch, Inner Guard Walker Watch. Lieutenant Word's property officer. Lieutenant Walker will be working tomorrow morning with the EMA exercises, Public Information Officer, not only for our department, but for the EMA now, for county events. Captain Ostenheimer with the K nine program, and works on policies and everything else under the sun. And Captain Stevens with Administration. Captain Greathouse has been working on investigations primarily lately, leading that. Our department, you've seen a lot of news about what's going on there. And we, Officer Syf has a report for you as to what the range officer has been doing. Our department's really upped our training in recent years. The SRT commander for the county is Officer Keegan. You see her often at council meetings. And I can go on, but every officer brings a different talent to our department. And we're very fortunate to have a well-rounded and professional police department. And with that, I thank you very much for your support. Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Ron Keegan.
Next, we have the mayor's State of the City. For all the visitors tonight, we picked a good night to come because we have a lot of annual reports. Mine's only forty-two pages, so I'll try to go through quite quickly. But we do, traditionally, the mayor has what's called the State of the City address every year, early, you know, usually February or March. I typically do mine first week of March, so. So I'd like to, first of all, thank the voters. 2019 is a busy year. And I thank them for having confidence in me and our administration. And we're very humbled to see that the citizens of Ucires can see that we're trying to do our very best to run the city efficiently with the resources and tax dollars that we have. And that we are, as you can all still by the bicentennial, we're focusing on the future of our children and students that are at school now and future residents. There's a lot to accomplish. We're very proud of what we've accomplished in the last six years, but there's a lot more to do. I kind of want to start a new tradition tonight to introduce some people who often are unsung, often are volunteers, but they, the city would not be the same without them. You play such a vital role in making this community what it is. And just like Ron and Kelly said tonight, our best asset are our citizens. So firstly, I'd like to introduce you Santana Stamper. Would you stand up, come over the podium? Now Santana was mentioned by the chief, and she has been here before a couple of times. But she deserves some special recognition. If you don't know who Santana Stamper is, you should. She is a certified peer recovery supporter for Operation Hope. She is the driving force behind Operation Hope. Which Operation Hope is often the last line of defense for somebody who needs, needs help, right? We just come down and, we've had, we've had to call you many times, day and evening, and, you know, people maybe just on their last legs, or just have nowhere to go, or trying to recover from drug issues. This is the lady they call right here. Now, she is on call twenty-four hours a day. And when that phone rings, she answers. But when the phone rings in the middle of the night, what do we do? We typically don't do that. But thank God Santana Stamper and Operation Hope play a vital role in this community. And I pledge that the city will work with you, give you any resources we can. But I just wanna say thank you, and honor you, and say what a blessing you are to the community. So thank you. Chief also mentioned Officer Carver, and I know he was here for a while, and I know he was, is he here? Okay. Come on up, Officer, this officer Jamie Carver. And he's gonna be moving a little slow for good reason. It was, I can't even remember, was it January that you responded to a call?
November.
What was it, February?
It was November.
November, my gosh, it's time to go quickly. So in November, responded to a call, there was a murder suspect in Crawford County. This murder suspect was from Columbus, right? Found in Gallion, and it was a combined effort between several departments. And Officer Carver found himself in the home with the suspect. The suspect was located in the attic, right? And you, what made you crawl up in that attic? Couldn't you yell at him and say, "Come on down"?
Well, I was out to check the attic.
You gotta check the attic, so you get a sense that he might have been out there. So you crawled up in the attic, risking your own life. You had no idea what, you suspected him to be armed and dangerous, right? And you crawled up there in such a brave way, and you fell through the attic. You fell through the attic, and then you fell in the stairwell. And you severely injured, you broke your back in how many places?
Two vertebrae.
Two vertebrae. And your recovery has been slow. He sits very rarely. We've seen him a few times. I know that his recovery, he wishes it would be going a lot quicker. And he's, he'll be back to duty quicker. But it'll heal just as quick as, as it will heal. Now, we're here to honor you tonight for your bravery, what you've done for the community, the job that all of our officers do. They go into the line of fire, you had no idea what you were gonna find. And it just isn't fair that you crushed the ceiling and you injured yourself. So know that your community is blessed by your presence. Thanks for coming up tonight. We wanted to honor you in a special way, and we wish you the best. And whatever we can do for you, we're here to do it. And know that your community is extremely grateful. Thank you for being a blessing to us. Officer, you, I know you aren't in pain, you don't have a state for the rest of your story. You've got thirty-nine pages to go, so. Thank you. And also, we don't have members of the fire department here tonight, but just recently, a week ago, they, from my neighborhood, well, we have one member, I'll talk about this here. They rescued an elderly couple in their home, smoked their home. And if you read the story in the media, it was quite a rescue. But the, could have easily been a situation where the officers, the firefighters may not have gone in. And our guys, you can always count on them going in. So we have two people that are alive tonight, thanks to the bravery of our fire department. Now, representing the fire department is our acting chief, Chad Swimley. So you get to stand up now, this is your turn. Come on over there, over there standing. Now, and you, where's Chief Keppke? Come up, you know, you too, so. We have exceptional safety forces in this community. And one of the reasons is because of these two guys right here. And they're tremendous leaders. They're about community all the way. They have been supported by the community with the safety forces loving. We expect a lot out of them, and they come through for us. But it starts at the top. You know what Chief Keppke's done for the community? He's left his mark, he's involved in so many things. And we appreciate everything that he's done. The gentleman to his left is Chief Chad Swimley. Now, this is, this is Chad's second tour of duty as acting chief. And he has been the voice of stability and quiet and steady leadership as we are in the period of transition in our fire department. So we've seen many, many good things through your leadership. And we thank you for what you've done. And we also pledge our support from the city administration, city council, to you too. So gentlemen, thank you for being a blessing to Ucires. Thank you. I didn't say you could leave, though. Okay. No, you could go, I'm sorry, just kidding. Well, I'll note this quickly, just, I'll look back on the city. 2019, we had a borders overwhelming, overwhelming, passing streets, we were moving along. A lot of people just allowed us to make, streets, we envy a small town. But a lot of people don't know, we have ninety miles of streets in the city, ninety miles. So, and that doesn't include the alleys that we paid too. So we have a lot to pay, it costs about $300,000 roughly to pay the streets. So you do the math and see how long it takes to add up. And so we've got a wonderful streets department, and we've got a very aggressive bill of payment plan for 2019, excuse me, 2020. We worked on the EPA separation plan, we've made substantial progress. It's been a heck of a mess on West Stone and Southern Avenue. Appreciate your patience on that. It's gonna require a little bit more patience. We're gonna have it pretty well buttoned up here by late summer. We were able to, with council's approval, take advantage of a multimillion-dollar zero-interest loan from the state, which allowed us to bring, accelerate our work at 2019 and 2020 prices, at zero interest. So that was a really good thing we did. The flooding in the West Stone Mansfield Street area was alleviated with the addition of drainage pipe right by the golf course there. You'll see some nice improvements there. And speaking of Mansfield Street, I have Mr. Radlins, who deserves a round of applause, as well as CIC members, for what they did at the Old Ben Farland's Trailer Court. We have a beautiful new restaurant, Burger King there, so thank you, guys. Last meeting, talk tree commission was here, I don't wanna go through anything they've done, but it was a very, very good year for the tree commission. We also established with the supportive city council, the More Tree Program. So if you have somebody in your family you wanna honor, and we will plant a tree in their honor. Very, very small tree. Michaelak Woods, right next to the tennis courts there, just adjacent, was graciously donated by Rich and Helen Michaelak. And we, we cut the ribbon on that, I believe it was in October. And so looking forward to getting there and cleaning up some of the downed wood there. And that'll be a nice little trail there, we're gonna plant some flowers and make it a nature trail. Forty stumps that have been bugging me for five years were finally taken out of Old Millard Park. We had a lot of ash trees die, so we cleaned Old Millard Park up quite a bit. You know that we have a setback in our pool. We started repairing that, and the repairs were much more extensive. Once you started dating, we had a lot more cracks in the pipes. Weather was horrible, and then there was a couple other issues with contractors. And it just, we, it just was basically the end of the year before we got it finished. So we apologize again for that, and weather permitting, it's gonna be, you know, open Memorial Day like usual, unless we have rain like we had last year, so. Nor somebody mentioned the Art Park. The stage was graciously donated to us by North Central State, Mansfield. And we're in the process of repainting and slight repairs of the stage, and it'll be installed at Shine's Art Park sometime late spring. Bruce Hyland, maybe some of you remember Bruce Hyland, no, Patty does. Class of 1970, he's our architect, and he's donated his time, and designed a very functional stage, and we set it off, and the community is going to enjoy that. And that was all a grant from the state of Ohio. Chamber of Commerce has a new director, Jessie Fearn. I think she's hit the ground running, and she's gonna be excellent. Lots of ribbon cuttings, we try to support all of those to the city. We were, a couple of years ago, ODOT moved to a new facility, as you know, and kind of left us another facility up on Irving Street. At that time, council allowed us to begin consolidation up there. And we were able to sell two buildings and, and put that, those buildings to use. So we've got Eminem Auto Repair down at Mary Street Garage, and Park Public Safety Equipment, bought the old water garage on Marion Road. And there's more than ten jobs to the city now. And we've been able to use that, we're leasing that for a dollar. And we're hoping to consolidate our streets department on Isaac Beal out there. So we're all under one roof, and hopefully sell that and raise some more jobs. So we're getting that building appraised again. Pine's Reservoir was on the topic quite a bit, right? ODMR has had that on their radar since the 1970s. And 2016, we notified council, "Yeah, let's get something done here. We need to do something about this because the dam was of such standard." And it was gonna be well over a million dollars to fix. We don't use the water anymore. So we reached an agreement with the ODMR in the fall of 2019 to breach the embankment. And so it's not gonna be a safety concern. And that work will begin this, this year on that. And then whatever council decides to do with that property, whether they wanna maintain it for city use or sell it off, that'll be decided at a later date. The housing and apartment shortage has been being addressed. We invested in a study with the Anor Association, the Associates, to help us address the needs, what kind of apartments we need, and how to go about doing that. Actually, the study that was presented to us, the partnership was the leaders in that. We invested along with the city of Gallion in that too. And we also have something called the Opportunity Zone, you may have read about in the media. The federal administration designated certain areas in, in the country as low-income areas, which people can invest in and then not get capital gains tax. That's an opportunity zone. We have some right here in Ucires and Crawford County. So we have a study on that, I would say, too. Thanks again for investing in that. And as we look ahead, many projects, I'd say we say probably the number one project we're looking for in the this year and next year is what are we gonna do with EMS? And we talked about that for years. We've, we're now, we're getting to the point now where we are taking a subsidy, which we weren't before, a hundred thousand dollars, and it's gonna go up a little bit each year. And so we've gotta make a decision on where we're heading with that. If we're gonna operate our own, if we're gonna be part of the district, or we, you know, form a new district. And those are the discussions we might be making very soon in presenting a plan. With our new water plant that we've just invested $25 million into, we want to make sure that we have the ability to sell water outside the city. And we've had some projects that we've expanded in last year. County Road 35, we went to Andrews Road, we went to the farther west in Winford High School. We've provided water to Winford High School, Wilkirk Crawford High School, in addition to our own high school. And so we're looking to head out west farther. Right now, we sent letters, second letters out to Stetzer Road, we've got a very, very good response there. We're gonna be making a decision about moving out to Stetzer Road here in the next, I'd say the next, probably about four to six weeks. And finally, as I close, you've heard enough tonight about the ambitious plans for the bicentennial celebration. You can see we've got a lot of enthusiasm, ponies and blunts. Ponies and what'd you say? Ponies?
Rainbow.
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 Yeah, it's, that's what we live with. Rainbow. But you need, you need a lot of enthusiasm and to pull this off. And we've got a really good committee, as you can see. So, Sam and Mary Norton, that, you know, settled here at eighteen nineteen. And as Kelly mentioned, Colonel Kilmore laid out the city twenty-one. And we just need to honor those. We can't let this year go by without making this a huge celebration. And then, the legacy projects are going to be huge. We've been doing some aggressive fundraising and we think we're going to be, my goal is to raise a million dollars. We're going to need a little bit of contributions, not just from businesses, but we're looking for people to, you know, we're looking for a lot of twenty, hundred dollar, five hundred dollar, thousand dollar donations. So, we're looking for everybody to contribute to that. In closing, thank you for the all the elected officials who serve the community. We certainly appreciate you doing that. The administration of Mr. Wagon, Captain Gibson, they have a tremendous devotion and service to the city. They're very enthusiastic and they, they, by having that, they make, they make, they make the whole mood of the city, the whole tone of customer service so much better. Because a lot of times we're faced, a lot of times people come up to see us, they're not in a very good mood. But we try to give everybody respect and respect and make sure we hit to the bottom and treat them like they want to be treated and try to solve the problems as best they can. So, I'd like, also like to thank my wife of forty-two years, Gail, and my family, my daughters and grandkids. They couldn't do this without a supportive family. So, I, I wouldn't be remiss to not thank them because it's, six years has gone very quickly. About, almost ten percent of my life, so, but it's gone very, very fast and I've enjoyed it, so. And so, I ask God's blessing on, on our community. Hopefully, we will continue to be blessed as we have been for two hundred years. Thank you, Mr. President. And any, is any questions? So, Mr. Me?
We got the carburetor replaced, the water plant?
That's a good question. I know we're, we've got a topic we brought today about the expansion of the bulk, but we didn't, we didn't finish the carburetor. I'll get an answer for you.
Okay.
Yeah, let me write it down here. But we are, we are, we're making the pipe bigger.
Either squash the rumors or let us know. It's always covered it down.
There is no commitment from all these.
I'm so tired of it.
No, no, we're not committing.
The Bell Stores gas station?
Yeah, Bell Stores.
Well, we, we reach out to businesses all the time. Businesses that you've all mentioned, we've reached out to.
How does Facebook know and I don't know?
Well, we, when we reach out to people, we don't let people, we don't put any pressure on businesses though, but none of those businesses have actually made a firm commitment. We have, we have nothing. Just solo squashes. And that's, you know, there's, there's three things on Facebook. Dogs, kittens, and rumors.
But when people ask me, I feel stupid when I say that. I've never answered anything.
For your aldees rumor, there actually was last year, the county, the property that sits next to the family farm and home, they were in negotiations to sell that and bring in aldees here, but unfortunately, that property did not suffice their requirement or their specifications. They want two plus acres. And believe it or not, they actually want to be located next to a Walmart.
Really? Mr. Mayor, you can give him another report and hear us.
No, that'll be all I have today.
Okay. I'll have some questions for you later on, but I'm not asking right now. Is there anybody else that wants to address council during the virtual speaking time? Hearing none, moving on to standing committee reports. Mr. O'Callaghan for Public Lands and Buildings.
On Thursday, February twentieth, six oh two to six ten P M, we spoke about the Ethan for Finley Hill as part of the city's twenty twenty-one bicentennial. Private residents expressed interest in landscaping that, as though we would need an easement. I believe we're going to have to talk about that again in committee because it wasn't quite right. So, that's, the easement there will be brought up again in the next committee meeting. The other issue we talked about is disposition of city parking lot number two. The owners, bakers have expressed interest. And we will work on getting money over the, transferring the property to the City Community Improvement Corporation so that entity could manage this sale. They have expansion plans and would include outdoor seating. And then, I recessed the meeting at six ten P M.
Does anybody have any questions for Public Lands and Buildings? Moving on, economic development is approved.
Economic development met from six ten to six thirteen P M. We, at a committee came a nomination for, looks like Kathleen Fisk to be appointed as a new member of the U.Sires Public Library Board. So, that's the other full council vote tonight. Kathleen Fisk through the library board.
What question do you have? She all does a favor of.
Pointing Kathleen.
Pointing Kathleen Fisk to the.
U.Sires Public Library Board.
U.Sires Public Library. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, she's going to the library.
Certainly by the resume, I think she's been there already.
Anybody else got any questions for economic development? Platy, Mr. Peever?
Yes, Platy met Thursday, February twentieth, from six thirteen to six sixteen P M. I was discussing the public hearing of seventeen twenty-five Hopley Avenue for rezoning request. This is the Home Mutual Insurance, which will include the property of Eppworth United Methodist and Christian Missionary Alliance Church, which is to the east, to change that, those three properties over to general business district from residential estate. There will be a public hearing on, we discussed about having a public hearing and we made it for Monday, March twenty-third at six P M here in council chambers. And I recessed at six sixteen. While I have the floor, I'll go on to finance. Finance met from six eighteen to six forty-two P M. We discussed the material bids, which is for the water filtration, water distribution in streets, on how to, on us to advertise with bids. We also discussed the reservoir engineering contract. And we voted to give that to pay the previous amount to Frank Center Carroll. And we received a new engineer estimate. And we are doing contract with S, symbol A and M E, E. They will be our new contractor for the city reservoirs to have them in compliance with O D R, O D and R requirements. Also, we discussed the Crawford County Council on Aging on the levy support. And finally, we recessed at six forty-two P M.
Does anybody have any questions for Platy or your finance, for Mr. Peever? Moving on to service committee, acting chair, Governor Meyer.
Service committee met on the February twentieth from six sixteen to six eighteen. Material bids were discussed and approved to be sent on to finance. I mentioned to the full council. Health and safety met from six forty-two to seven oh eight. The Second Amendment resolution was discussed. And since here that there was, no motions were made in the committee. Chair declared the matter closed. That was recessed at seven oh eight. Then, the ad hoc committee met from seven thirteen to eight thirty-eight. We addressed the council rules of procedure. We got through those and subsequently had a meeting prior to tonight's meeting where those were voted on. We still have the section of the codified ordinance that we'll give to on Thursday related to the council rules and procedures.
Okay, and backing up to the health and safety committee, I just wanted to give an update to all the council members because I was the representative for the city at the last E and S board meeting. There was some discussion amongst the board members concerning staffing at Horstman, who is the private provider of the ambulance service. And there's, there's three trucks and their contract states that they are to have a paramedic on all three trucks. And they said that there was a, that they've lost some employees. And there's some times that they have, the ambulance board members have, and they brought that up, that there was not three paramedics. There was only two paramedics and then the third truck had an E M T basic and an E M T intermediate on it. And I'm going to let Mr. Myers explain why that's an issue because he's got more expertise on that.
Go ahead. Can I suggest to you that we save this for Thursday? I think it's best to bring it up in a committee where we have a more discussion.
Okay. Well, we, we need to, because of that, we need to start having some serious discussions on the C and S stuff.
I think Thursday would be more suitable where we could go back and forth and discuss.
It'll be on agenda, so. Does anybody have any questions for the health and safety or service committee? Hearing none, I need a motion to accept the committee minutes and related committee reports collectively.
Second.
All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Report of city officers. I have a report for the mayor and is there a safety service?
Yeah, I've got service directors, the report. We've got referral to the, I would like to refer the current airport projects to service and finance. Just let Todd know, we'd like to discuss that on the fifth. And then, the, in addition, the O P W C ninety waterline project to finance, the twenty-twenty million paid project to finance, the garbage truck to service and finance, and the city hall generator to public lands and buildings. And those, we will, we'll be ready to discuss those on the nineteenth, not this coming Thursday.
Motion for all of you. Okay, I need a motion to refer all of those to their respective committees.
Second.
All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Mr. Peever?
I do have a question for you, Mr. Mayor. Fairview Avenue and Marion Road and Beal Avenue. Again, I was there heading south, waiting at the traffic light, and I saw another vehicle make a right-hand turn off of Fairview Avenue and head south on Marion Road and could not see the oncoming car coming from Beal Avenue. And I thought we were, we discussed that before, that, we discussed that a year ago. Right. And, well, I thought there would be a no right-hand turn on red or Fairview because of that instant. They cannot see to the, to the, that would be to the west, to their right.
What was brought up? And I don't remember what.
I can, I believe that traffic permission did approve as in there was to be a no turn on red sign.
And there's no sign there yet.
Okay, it's in the traffic map.
So, since you brought that up, the, those lights, the overhead lights and the arms are going to be, just called locates them, and those should be installed here pretty quickly.
The new pole will be put up yesterday.
What's that?
The new, the new black pole will be put up yesterday.
It was put up yesterday?
Yeah, in the rain. They're right there in the rain putting them up.
Oh, great.
But I was just curious, if there could be a, a street sign put there right there. I, I hate to see somebody have an ass.
I know, we discussed that in last year on traffic commission. Okay. I'll double check it with. I've got some questions for the administration. What's the status down at Old Millard Park on the Little League building and flood plane? We just received the elevation certificate and that's going to be reviewed by the law director and then going to be sent that into the FEMA contact we have. We just, we just got that. And then, then he's going to get back with us and let us know what, what the requirements will be, what we have to do. Another, another separate issue. We approved, and this was several councils ago, money for a bike path going to the Friendship Bridge? That's going to be started in March by the Pilger. Yeah, that's going to be started here this month. Okay. Does that got to go up to bid? No, it's already been.
I was going to say, we awarded that and everything. That was last year.
We're just waiting. He, he, he was awarded the project and just waiting for time to get it done. So, he's, couldn't get it done before the weather turned bad. So, he's, he's starting it very, very soon. It's in March twenty twenty, something like that. Okay, and it just lost me. I'll think of it later. Does anybody else have any questions for safety service directors report? Moving on to the law directors report.
Thank you, sir. Just one, maybe one and a half referrals. We need to refer the annual auction ordinance that goes to finance, I believe. We have something to do with O R C. We have to update it every year. And I have on my list to re-refer the federal health project that showed them.
It's a committee.
Is it still a committee?
Yeah, because we have a House of Questions.
So, we don't need that.
That was a.
Yeah, need a motion of the annual auction ordinance to.
Well, actually, Mr. President, didn't you also want to refer, you discussed the servant, the charging station, A E P placement?
Yes. Yeah, exactly. So, two and a half. But yes, we do need to refer to public lands and buildings, the A E P charging station. An issue has arisen with respect to the placement of the pole. There is a current utility pole in that parking lot, but it is a city-owned utility pole, oddly enough. So, A E P can attach to it. They want to put in a pole right next to it and they need an easement from us to do so. They've, they've sent me the request and easement and all that, and we will have that for you Thursday. I, I don't know why, but they require their own pole, I guess.
By ability wise?
Yeah, sure, sure. Lawyers. But, so, yeah, I'll have, I'll have a referral. So, that, that needs to go to public lands and buildings.
We need a, a motion for the annual auction ordinance to go to the finance committee.
So, second.
All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. And motion for the A E P charging station easement to go to public lands and buildings.
So, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
So, now they're going to end up getting a free power pole out of this deal, do they?
Well, that makes me a conversation to have, is maybe have them talk to, you know, our utility people to see if maybe ours needs to come down and theirs go off or whatever. I, outside the scope of, sure. But yeah, that'd maybe be a conversation to have. But me, I'm just.
Does anybody have any questions for the law director? Moving on to the lawyer's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. You have a statement in cash position for February twenty-nine and the tax revenue jurisdictions. I will note that February's collection were up sixteen percent as of February of last year, which is a good thing. We're reaping the benefit of our contract with the higher attorney general's office for these delinquent taxes that we were unable to collect because we've exhausted all of our resources. And the attorney general's office, people tend to pay a little more attention to a letter from them than they do from us. letter from them than they do from us. And last month, we collected almost $14,000 through that program. And this week, we're getting another 5,400. We, we, they send us by direct deposit what they've collected each, each week. So I'm looking forward to a banner year.
So they don't charge a fee to do that?
It's charged to the taxpayer because they have, they have to take care of it. So no, it doesn't cost us a thing except our time to send them the cases. And we've got some cases paid off that went back to 2002, 2006, 2007, and we are extremely excited. We also implemented a new credit card system per se. The link is on our website, so once you have prepared your return, you still need to mail it in or bring it in in person, but you have the option of paying by credit cards or there's a service fee for that. It can be a credit debit, or you can do an e-check. The e-check is a dollar.
Is it a dollar?
Yeah. A payment of $40 or less, there's a fee of a dollar. Otherwise, it's two and a quarter percent based on your payment. You will know what that charge is before you actually submit, so if you think, no, I don't want to do it this way, we still pay checks, cash, you know, whatever, but this is a little more convenient. And if you're making payments, you know, if you already filed, but you're making payments to have things paid by April 15th, you can just go online and do it instead of having to make another trip into the office. So that just went into effect yesterday, so we're waiting to see how all of this works out. Down the road, we hope to have online filing too, but at this point, you know, we're not quite there yet, so trying to make things a little more convenient for people. I've also been rather absorbed the last few weeks, you know, we've had, the mayor mentioned our zero-interest loan, which is administered through Ohio Water Development Authority. And the projects that we started, actually designing for the storm separation was back in 2017. All these loans were actually approved last year, the last one, I think, we got approval maybe in January, where we got the bill for the approval. And then I had to go back and recreate all those bills that we paid so we could get reimbursed and found out that I had to go back three years and put all that together for the Group One sewer project. But since last week, we've been reimbursed about $800,000. So I think I'm up to date now and can just put these disbursement requests in as we go, and that's a, a big load off my shoulders right now because that, that was a lot of digging. And last but not least, I have some referrals this evening. We talked earlier about the generosity of our community, and we have received donations. Well, the police department actually ran a fundraiser with their stuffed dogs, Ellie and Harvey, and so I need to appropriate that money to the K-9 program. We also got money through the community foundation for Safety Town, and there are donations being collected, and I thought I was gonna know the amount, I don't know yet, hopefully I'll have it for Thursday, for a new police LEAP program. I'm not sure what that acronym, acronym means, but it's about counseling for police officers who, you know, because they're on the front lines every day, they're seeing overdoses, they're seeing, you know, you name it, they're seeing it. And if they, if they need help, this program is to help them handle these things. So we'll need an appropriation there, those, those are all in the general fund. Also, we received donations from the VFW, $1,000 each for the police department and the fire department, and those funds need to be appropriated to the proper funds. And that's all I have.
Okay, we need a motion for the appropriations or referral to the finance committee?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Anybody else have any questions for the order? The treasure report, we have a treasure report?
Except, except.
Oh, we need a motion to accept the, the January report for treasure.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Need a motion to accept all these officer reports?
Second.
All in favor of accepting those, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any visitor's input regarding the standing or special committees and reports of city officers? Does anybody need a recess? Okay, the, the opioid settlement, we're gonna need a vote to suspend the certified ordinance 111.19.
Mr. President, I'd like to move that we suspend the rules in our conjunction with codified ordinance 111.19 to consider a proposal of resolution 208-2020.
Second. Okay, all in favor of suspending those rules, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so now we can have a discussion, does anybody want to have a discussion on the opioid settlement?
I agree with Chief Gifford, right?
Where does, where does the money go? When I, I, when I read, just to the general fund, did they decide that it goes to like opioids?
So this is just allowing us to be part of, if there's going to be funds attributed in a lawsuit. We don't even know for sure if it's.
I thought there was funds.
Gonna get that far, but this has to happen by Thursday, I think.
The state needs this by Friday if we can pass it, yes.
That's why we're.
This just puts us in line so we can actually receive funds.
Maybe they'll send us a check for five million, I don't know.
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five million.
Shoot for the stars, sir.
So, we don't have to have a vote on that until later?
It'll just come up in the legislation.
Consideration of proposed legislation for the first time?
Yes, we have one ordinance and three resolutions. Ordinance number nine, 2020, is an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to contract for professional design and engineering services with SNME Inc. for remediation of city reservoirs without competitive bidding pursuant to Ohio revised code sections 1 by 3.65 et cetera and 725.251, in order to complete remediation planning for city reservoirs per Ohio Department of National Resources requirements and declaring an emergency. That should refer back to the finance committee. Resolution, resolution number 206, 2020, authorizing and directing the service safety director of the City of Bisciris, Ohio, to advertise for bids and to enter into contracts for the purchase of various materials and supplies. That's referred back to the service committee. Resolution number 207, 2020, be resolved for Ohio revised code section 5722 et cetera, the Council of the City of Bisciris hereby authorizes and directs the mayor of the City of Bisciris to transfer certain real property owned by the City of Bisciris and described herein as 220 North Sandusky Avenue, city parking lot number two, in lot 0800, 1479 by thousand, by free claim deed to the Bisciris Community Improvement Corporation and declaring an emergency. That's referred back to the public lands and buildings committee. Resolution number 208, 2020, and this is one we just talked about, and we went to see resolution, authorizing the law director to accept the one Ohio memorandum of understanding regarding the pursuit and use of potential opioid litigation settlement funds and declaring an emergency. That is referred to council as a whole.
Need a motion to accept those as first reading? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Those are going back to originating committees. Is there any public participation on anything that we just proposed on first reading here?
Did I hear that right, then?
Can, can you go up and state your name, Madam, please?
Robert Taylor, 411 Plunge Street. Did I, did I not comprehend that, that we're asking for an emergency resolution for bakers to buy a parking lot, or is that the wrong address?
That's, that is exactly what you heard, and that is, we, we had discussed this at the committee meeting, and I was told, or we, we came up in a committee meeting and said that we didn't think it needed to be emergency, and I personally don't think it should be because it's, it's selling your public-owned property.
What's the emergency?
Well, I don't know.
Does anybody know, Mr. Mayor, is there any reason why this needs to be emergency or anything?
Well, they, it's, they've got use for it this year, I mean, if it goes to three readings and we have to wait 30 days, you know, that might, if, if we don't get it in their hands till, you know, May or June, you know, that just, that just delays any plans they might have for it. We want to get it in their hands right away so they can bring more people to town, create more jobs, and bring more tax revenue to the city. Let's get it done.
I, I still, I, I don't.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see how it's an emergency, I mean, I don't, it's gonna take more than 30 days to build a parking lot, I'm sure. I'd say there's some excavating gonna have to go on there, I would think.
The committee did not vote to have it as an emergency, so I don't even think we can even entertain it as emergency because the committee didn't vote it that way. So that's my position on that. Does anybody else have any public participation? Committee reports on the pending legislation. Finance committee?
Finance committee is favorable to ordinance nine dash 2020, the reservoirs, engineering contract.
Service committee?
Service committee is favorable to resolution 206, 2020, the material bids.
Public lands and buildings?
Public lands and buildings committee is favorable to resolution number 207 dash 2020.
And council as a whole, I think we're favorable to the opioid settlement. We need a motion to accept those reports.
So moved, second.
Consideration of proposed legislation for. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Consideration of proposed legislation for the third time?
We have two ordinances and one resolution. Ordinance number three, 2020, amending and supplementing section 1157.02, entitled official zoning map under chapter 1157, entitled zoning districts and zoning district map. Under title nine, entitled zoning districts under part 11, entitled planning and zoning code. The codified ordinances of the City of Bisciris by the redesignation of the properties located at 1815 East Mansfield Street and 1825 East Mansfield Street for parcel numbers 4300, 13283001 and 4300, 13283000, from General Business, the General Business District, into LIC, the Limited Commercial Industrial District, and that is already been approved by the planning committee, this is a, has gone through, this is a third reading. Ordinance number four, 2020, amending and supplementing section 351.14 of the codified ordinances of the City of Bisciris, Ohio, by designating an electric vehicle park, charging only parking space and including a two-hour parking limit, has been approved by the public lands and buildings committee. And resolution number 205, 2020, authorizing and directing the Bisciris Public Service Safety Director on behalf of the City of Bisciris, Ohio, to advertise for bids and to enter into a contract or contracts not to exceed $205,000 with the lowest and best bidder or bidders for the installation of a UV system at the wastewater treatment plant. And finally, authorizing and directing the Bisciris City All-Invert-Chargery Ward or Warrants in payment therefore from the appropriate appropriation or appropriations, and that was approved by the service committee.
Need a motion to accept those as the third reading?
So moved, second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I've, I've got, who, McKeever or what, Myers?
McKeever and Myers.
McKeever and Myers, aye.
All opposed? Is there any public participation on the third reading of the Mansfield rezone, the charging station parking space designation or UV system bin? There are none. Further consideration of pending legislation. Ordinance nine dash 2020, the reservoir engineering contract, if the duty passes as emergency. For the second and third reading of proposed ordinance number nine dash 2020, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved, second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Truka?
Yocum?
Yes.
Foal?
Yes.
All seven?
Yes.
Ordinance number nine, 2020.
Do I hear a motion to adopt ordinance number nine dash 2020?
So moved.
Myers?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Foal?
Yes.
All seven?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Truka?
Ordinance number nine dash 2020 is duly adopted.
Yeah, this is, this is regular legislation.
Okay, the material bids, we've gone through three readings?
This is, will be the first reading of this. Oh, this is, we have the first reading, so this is, we need a motion to second and third readings, if there is one, and if not, then we'll pull it through.
Okay, does anybody feel the necessity to speed up the material bids? Okay. City parking lot transfer number two, which is resolution, resolution 207 dash 2020, does anybody feel the need to speed up that?
I do. I'll second it, thank you.
So you need to read the, does he need to read the, do I have a motion, because we just had a motion?
You've had the motion, what formula language are you using?
So we're just, um, Foal?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Me?
No.
Truka?
Yocum?
Yes.
All seven?
Yes.
Resolution number 207, 2020.
It sounds in the first reading.
Okay, that's gonna be held in the first reading. State opioid settlement? For the second and third reading of proposed ordinance 208 dash 2020, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Yocum?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Truka?
Foal?
Yes.
All seven?
Yes.
Resolution number 208, 2020.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution number 208 dash 2020?
So moved, second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Truka?
Yocum?
Yes.
Foal?
Yes.
All seven?
Yes.
Resolution number 208 dash 2020 is duly adopted. The East Mansfield Street rezoning?
We just have a motion to adopt this.
Do I hear a motion to adopt the proposed ordinance number three dash 2020?
So moved.
Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Foal?
Yes.
All seven?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Truka?
Yocum?
Yes.
Ordinance number three dash 2020 is duly adopted. The charging station parking space. Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number four dash 2020?
So moved, second.
Myers?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Truka?
Yocum?
Yes.
Foal?
Yes.
All seven?
Yes.
Ordinance number four dash 2020 is duly adopted. The UV system bin. Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution 205 dash 2020?
So moved, second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Truka?
Yocum?
Yes.
Foal?
Yes.
All set?
Yes.
Resolution number two zero five dash twenty twenty is newly adopted. Unfished business, does anybody have any unfished business? New miscellaneous business. I just, I just, I figured out what I forgot to ask earlier here. Could you update Council, Mr. Mayor, on the bid opening for the art park stage?
Okay, well, we didn't have a, uh, anybody actually bid on it, so we're trying to figure out a next move which could possibly, uh, entail putting it up, uh, ourselves, so we're gonna be making a decision on that, uh, here very shortly.
Okay, does anybody else have any? We have a public hearing Wednesday, March eleventh, for Arrowhead Drive, six P M, Council Chamber, Council Chambers, Monday, March sixteenth, Planning Commission Meeting, Council Chambers, four P M. Monday, March twenty-third, public hearing on rezoning for Hopley, Council Chambers, six P M. Tuesday, March twenty-fourth. Board of Zoning and Appeals Meeting, Council Chambers, four P M. Need a motion to excuse Mr. Truka?
Sub move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We have regular committee meetings, all referrals from this committee meeting and any open project. Which are?
Uh, yes, we have, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, uh, referrals from the, um, Service Safety Director to Finance, we have the, uh, Ron MB Waterline. From the, um, Service Safety Director to Finance, we have the twenty twenty metal tape project. From the Service Safety Director to Service and Finance, we have a, a garbage truck. From the Service Safety Director to Public Lands and Buildings and Finance, we have the City Hall generator. None of these will be on the agenda for Thursday, but they will be, uh, on the agenda in two weeks. Uh, from the Service Safety Director to Service and Finance, we have the, uh, airport projects for twenty twenty that will be on the agenda for Thursday, and Kevin Betray will, Kevin Betray will be here to, uh, detail those projects. From the Law Director to Public Lands and Buildings, we have the, uh, easement for AEP for the charging station, that's in Public Lands and Buildings. From the Auditor to Finance, we have the various appropriations. From the Law Director to Finance, we have the municipal property disposal that we do every year. Already in committee, and on the agenda for, uh, Thursday, we have a sidewalk repair. Last year, the Council asked me to look into grants for, um, repair of existing sidewalks. I have done so, and I will give you a report on that. On Thursday, uh, we have our codified ordinances, one-one-one and one-one-three, this is a continuation of the Council rules. Uh, we need to address that, that will be the ad hoc, uh, committee of rules. We have the Findlay Hill easement, which we requested legislation from two weeks ago. We actually have, uh, two things we need to request, so that has to go back and we have to just go through those motions again. That's in Plating and Public Lands and Buildings, Plating was the committee that requested the legislation. Public Lands approved the request. And in Health and Safety, we have ambulance service. Uh, anything else, let me know between now and eleven A M, and, uh, that's all we have.
Need a motion to adjourn?
Sub move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We're adjourned at eight forty-nine P M.